The FCC LA National Leadership Conference. Each student that attended the conference was a national competitor with which is an excellent representation of our school and our FCC LA chapter. Many students on this trip had never left Oklahoma before, and it was really exciting for their first trip out of the state to be with FCC LA.
We entered 12 competitions and ended competitions, nine teams placed top 10 in the nation. We came home with one national runner-up, Carson Schonbacher, and one third-place national winner, Tessa Littlefield. After all the hard work put in during the school year, it was exciting to be able to bring home so many national awards.
Davin Booty ran for a national officer position and hoped Jordan served as an Oklahoma voting delegate in the national officer candidate race. So students volunteered multiple hours judging and keeping time for other star events competitors, showing that our chapter isn't just there to compete, we're also there to serve.
During the conference, we attended leadership workshops, networked with students from across the country, and listened to incredible speakers. Exploring downtown Denver was fun and exciting. We ate at unique restaurants, shopped around, and had the time of our lives. We attended a Rockies game, which was the highlight of our trip, and we loved the fireworks show at the end of the game most of all.
The trip to the 2023 FCC LA National Leadership Conference was an incredible experience. As I've heard, it wasn't open. We are very thankful for your guys' support to let us attend this trip and hope that you will continue to support us in the coming school year. Thank you so much. Do you guys have any questions for them about their trip? Anything they learned, experienced?
I'm on the spot. Kila Shirley, you got something?
I'm trying to think of something.
Did you really like downtown Denver?
Yes.
There were parts that were a little...
It was scary sometimes.
A little different here.
Well, thanks, guys. Appreciate you coming.
Sorry it took so long.
Oh, you're good. We're here now. It's done.
You guys did a great job.
Thanks.
Are we able to do this next?
You do not, unless you're willing to.
That's their question. Thank you, guys.
Takes us to number three, principals' reports.
At the elementary, on November 13th, Mrs. Cudmore planned a lot of kindness day activities. We had a really fun day at the elementary through capturing kids' hearts this year. We focused on kindness all the time. And on 13th, we had painted everybody in the school, painted rocks, and turned around a tree out of the playground. I'm not exactly sure how many rocks have made it that are still there, but hopefully there's still a few. We also made like a school-wide chain with kindness things on it and have that hanging in the school, so it was a really fun day to celebrate kindness. And then on November 15th, Ms. Oklahoma was here, and she built right on that kindness and talked about the lasting impression of not being kind, and she was a really great speaker. She's also a teacher, which I didn't know, so it was fun to hear her speak. On the 17th of November, I believe, our third and fourth graders were able to go to School House Rock Live at Northwestern, thanks to the Rights Foundation, so we really appreciate that. It's a good experience for them to get out of Cherokee and kind of go experience some culture over there at Northwestern. And then most recently, on December 1st, Santa came, so it's been a lot of fun with the elementary, and we're just working hard to get to Christmas break.
Which is when is Christmas break?
It's nine days.
Yeah. Nine days. I didn't put on here, but Ms. Oklahoma came to high school as well. She's pretty awesome. I didn't realize that she was a school teacher, so I think she'd said she's the oldest Ms. Oklahoma ever, so that was pretty cool. One thing I didn't, also didn't put on here is Steve Tanyo came and talked to our student body about phone and internet safety, because there's so many things out there that kids can get into and not even know. So Mrs. Jordan talked to me, and I thought it was a great idea for him to come and visit with our student body about phone and internet safety and all the things they can get into and not even know, and how to get help if they get into something that's a bad situation. On this, FFA, they packaged 5,760 meals at staff at starvation over Thanksgiving break. Joel Parker was the state sporting place, 17 out of 20, tied for sixth place out of 85 kids. Davin Booty was second place at the state FFA week show and received a $2,000 scholarship plus cash awards. And then last weekend, five students attended the League 360 Conference in Sparks, Oklahoma, which I'm, what I heard this morning is they stayed in Shawnee and woke up Sunday morning with no electricity in the entire town. So this league camp basketball tournament starts Thursday. The Lady Chiefs play Canton at 10 o'clock in the morning, and the Chiefs play Will Make it at 11:20. The Christmas parade is this Wednesday at 7 o'clock. I know we have several floats that are going to be in it, so that's always fun, and Mrs. Snyder was very happy this year because the weather looks dry, so the last several years it's been wet. At some point during the parade, so. Semester tests for our building will be December 14th and 15th. We'll take afternoon or fifth, sixth, and seventh hours on the 14th, that's a Thursday, and then first through fourth hour on Friday the 15th. We have a basketball game that day, a high school game, but it's at 3:30 at home that day, since both schools get out for Christmas break a little bit earlier, we decide to play games over that day. Christmas break is December 18th through January 1st. The second semester begins January 2nd. Our floor maintenance in the gym will be getting done over Christmas break, so the gym will be closed from the 19th through the 25th, so nobody will be allowed in the gym. Parents, if you're a parent of a student in grades 6 through 12, you've probably just got a text message at 5:45 about a survey for capturing kids' hearts. It's our mid-year survey. I've sent one to teachers, I have one for students, and I have one for parents also. It's been very interesting to look at those results, kind of see where we're at and where we need to be going, so I've been able to look at the students for a couple days now, so that's pretty interesting. And then 2003 postseason awards, District B2, Kai McHenry was your Offensive Player of the Year. He was also an eight-man All-Star. He's also a CTB Sports All-Star, which he'll be getting that award Wednesday the 13th at a dinner that him and Coach Sean Barker will go to. Zach Heller was an eight-man All-Star alternate, and then All-District Specialist was Xander Jackson. And then underclassmen that were All-District was Alberto Alvarez was O-line, Tate Allison, linebacker, Antonio Macias, defensive back. Honorable mentions were Zach Heller, Aiden Hall, Joel Parker. And then the Academic All-District, current 3.5 GPA or higher, Trig Green, Tyson Green, Gavin Guth, Kai McHenry, Xander Jackson, Zach Heller, Joel Parker, White Parker, Jose Castro, Kate Smith, Joe Dooley, and Declan Lucas. So a lot of those kids have 3.5.
Great. There you go.
Probably, but I'm...
Yeah. You're calling it, huh?
Yeah.
Thanks, guys. Takes us to number four, Privilegio Consent Agenda, A through E. Go ahead, Bryce.
Nothing really out of the ordinary. Our utilities are kind of staying pretty consistent and steady. We did purchase some Chromebooks. And also, I don't know if that's on here, we're purchasing some things that go along with our interactive boards that we got through Donuts Shoes as well. Those purchases are made with our SFR3 funds that will expire after this year, so we're using quite a bit of that. Purchased Chromebooks and some iPads, some things that we know that we're going to need throughout the next few years. Fallout School Solutions, that is a new library system. Talked to Mrs. Cudmore earlier this year, and she asked about updating kind of the cataloging software that we use to get up to date, and so this program would kind of allow this building's library, along with the elementary's library, kind of talk together, keep those lists a little bit more in one place, and make things a little bit better there. So that's kind of a big purchase right now, and then moving forward, I'm sure there'll be smaller yearly subscription fees with it, but she said, I just talked to her a little bit ago, she's down there at Keepa Gate, and said she's kind of just finishing up the training on that and getting ready to go ahead and get that started and start getting Chromebooks and all those things put into that system. So I said, other than that, kind of business as usual, not really anything out of the ordinary to discuss there in our general fund expenditures. Same thing, building fund, child nutrition, knock on wood, everything's going pretty well with both of those, and haven't had a lot of issues that we've had to address recently there. Any questions about any of those? If not, I'll kind of jump down if I can. Fundraisers, library, that was, that's for the pictures and the reading stuff they did with SANA. Just needed to make sure that we had that on the list this month as well. Treasurer's report, I'm not sure what page that report is on, I know it's down there a little ways. But all of our fund balances right now are remaining steady. Gross production was up just a little bit last month, more than it was, and so I think our check that we should be hitting next week, I anticipate that being a little bit higher, but it's still right there around that 60, 70% of what we were bringing in last year mark that we talked about early in the year. So holding steady, that's good. Like I said, our fund balances right now, you know, everything looks pretty healthy, except for obviously the sinking fund still has that negative fund balance there because of the tax protest issues from last year, but that will change after we get a check here in January and then again in February. So that should look a lot better at that point. Activity fund, is there anything?
No.
It's just busy. Lots of concession, a gate, basketball tournaments that we had last month before Thanksgiving break, and we're supposed to play basketball games right now.
Is that just a volunteer basis, people that you ask to run the gate stuff, huh?
They volunteer on which games they want to cover, but it's part of kind of our agreement with the teachers. Is it two and two, two football, two basketball?
It used to be a football, two basketball.
Yeah. But all of our regular season things, our staff signs up and takes those on, and it's kind of the same thing with concession, try to get different organizations to sign up and do those things, too.
Yeah. Although I do have some spots open for our high school basketball tournament, so we're interested in one. We will take all the help we can.
I do what I can, I'm here.
There you go, got one volunteer.
I'm here to now.
That's not what I asked for.
You got anything else you want to go with, Bryce?
Unless there's any other, you know, questions about any of that stuff, like I said, other than the technology that we purchased with the SFR funds.
So did we replace some ones that were bad, or did we add to it?
It's a little bit of both. We're not really replacing, we're just preparing for as some of the older ones...
Are falling out.
Are falling off, we're trying to replace those and stay...
I guess they're totally obsolete once they're done, right?
Well, I mean, like the Chromebooks, yeah. I mean, they're pretty much, I mean, we've had them for almost seven years now. So we purchased a class that, we purchased 40, and then we purchased new interactive boards for over here and at the other, so they'll replace the smart boards that are on them.
Any other questions, concerns, cracks, grunts, complaints? Nothing else? Is that all you have, Bryce?
That's all I have.
Okay. Looking for a motion?
Making a motion to approve A through E.
Does it raise a man a motion to approve A through E? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Heather's second. Judy.
Littlefield?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Callum?
Yes.
That takes us to five. Discussion vote to approve a resignation letter from Bucky Bell.
I reluctantly have to present this to you all, and it was not something that Bucky, I'm sure he really wanted to do, but for personal reasons, he's had to resign, and so he did turn a letter into us that would be effective December 15th. You know, Bucky's been helping us out for several years, done a tremendous job, such a nice guy, and do just anything we've asked. I can't, you know, thank him enough for everything that he has done, and drive buses, and open clean up messes and fixing things, and just everything in between, and so really hate to see that. Don't know exactly what, you know, might happen in the future, but both he and I are on great terms, and I think it'll continue to stay that way, but he will be resigning effective December 15th.
I make a motion to approve as a resignation letter. Do I have a second?
Second.
Heather's second. Judy.
Littlefield?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Callum?
Yes.
Number six, discussion of vote to approve or not approve a contract with Partners in Wellness for school-based services for the 23-24 school year.
This is a new program or company that we're using for testing services through IDEA and Special Ed this year, and with that, we need to have a board-approved agreement. It can be found in this, I have it as page 47. Basically, as we need testing services, evaluations, things like that done, this company will do those and charge those, and then there's a way that we can go through the Oklahoma Healthcare Authority and get reimbursed for those. And so it's cost us just a little bit upfront to get that started, but then we should be able to send those in and get reimbursed for some of those services and testing evaluation things that we've done. So this agreement with them is just part of kind of the process of getting signed up and getting started with them.
When you say some of the testing services, is that like the IQ slash autism screening type, that types of testing, PTOT?
Yeah, there's several, I'm trying to find words. So direct therapy services, evaluations, documentation, stat injury, consultation with parent and teacher, participation in ID plans, individual therapy services, maybe some Medicaid billing services, so things that would fall, you know, into those different categories there.
So if they're doing some of that testing, where does that put like our OT people? Are they still going to do their own testing? Or so it'll be like double testing?
OT and PT still have to do their own evaluations. This is a school psychologist who does the cognitive testing, initial testing and placement, and let me just say, they're wonderful. They've been doing a really great thorough job on any student we've had concerns with and placements, and they really take their time, and I think the initial evaluations have been very thorough, so.
Any other questions or concerns? Do I have a motion?
Making a motion to... First, which one is the first one?
Heather's made a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Shane's second. Judy.
Littlefield?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Callum?
Yes.
Number seven, discussion of vote to accept or reject bids for upgraded internal crisis communication systems for the district.
And I talked a little bit about this last month. First of those quotes, we received two for these upgraded systems, and what we're talking about is all of our internal intercom systems right now, especially in this building. We have several that they're just not working. You make an announcement, you just, I mean, there's some rooms you can't hear in, so those things don't always get communicated. The field house doesn't receive any of those. We have to rely on the phone only over there, or as coaches, if we're in there, just, you know, our cell phones. And so what we're wanting to do is use the security grant money that the state has provided and use that to upgrade our entire district's internal communication system. So both of these quotes, and I've asked Mrs. Tucker to come in here because she can explain the technical things much better than I can, but what we're wanting to do is be able to tie both main sites plus our ag building, our field house, all together, and be able to communicate if we had any kind of, you know, crisis issue, that both buildings, everybody can communicate and kind of get the same messages there.
You say both buildings, you were talking elementary and this school.
Yes, if we were to do a lockdown here, if we initiated a lockdown here, it's also going to send the same message to Kila's building, so Kila would lock down tornado, fire, any of those big communications like that would go to all sites at the same time. I mean, because in theory, if we do have some sort of crisis here, the other building needs to...
Yeah, because we're using old school intercoms plus phone lines, landlines.
Well, it's all, right now, it's all through the phone system. The elementary does not have intercoms in the ceiling or the push button, whenever they remodeled, that all went away. Over here, we, it's gone. I mean, we've still got the push button, we've still got the speakers in the ceiling, but the system in Kendra's office is gone. So we upgraded the phone system seven, eight years ago, and when we did that, we put a phone in every room, and when you hit page all, it goes to the ceiling speaker and to the phones in the classrooms. However, when it happens, it's going to start in my classroom here, I'll hear it in here, and then my room starts, and then the hallway starts. So it's like stair step, so you just hear it in like a repeat mode over and over, and then it cuts out halfway through.
Is there still a push?
There is, over here, there is still a push to talk in every classroom and a speaker in every ceiling.
But Kila won't have that over there?
Kila will have that when we do this, so we will install a push button and a ceiling speaker in all the rooms over there.
We had a drill the other day, and I had a text message about 15 minutes after it was over, and said, are we still in lockdown or can we, because we had an intruder drill on us, did you know where you're good to go? She couldn't hear the announcement where they were at, it was cut out, and so they were locked down and hiding for about 15 minutes. Good for them.
And so, like I said, we, you know, put out and, you know, reached out to different companies that can do this. We do have two quotes here, or two bids. One is, I gotta get back up here, United Systems, the other would be Index. Both companies, you can jump in in time here.
Both companies offer this pretty much the same thing. Index is a little bit more cost-wise than United System is. I'm leery of the United Systems quote because it took a month when I asked him to get me two additional speakers on it, it took him over 30 days to respond to that quote. So, I mean, it's $10,000 less, but if it's going to take you 30 days to respond to something, then that makes me a little leery. And they have one day a week that you can call for a two-hour window to get live support right then, the rest of the time you can email or do a chat, but if you want live one-on-one, they've got a small window. Index, he's come out here a couple times, he's working with Pinoka right now, he's been at Burlington, they've got an index system there. Elliot has come out here several times, he's very helpful, knowledgeable. He did offer that if we needed to get extra switches or things like that, they would allow us to use like a loner device if it was something where we could purchase E-rate money with, but E-rate money, you have to wait until July to get it. So he did say that they can go ahead and use some of their stuff and then just swap when that equipment came in to save us some money. So he has been very on the ball with coming out here and helping, and he does technology for a school still, part-time, so he is very much like ready to help with whatever even. He's like, even if it's not in this, like, and you've got a question about someone else, just call me, I know somebody to talk to.
Would you have complete control over the system once it's set up, or you got to call into it?
No. We will have complete control over it. It will also do the bells as well, so we can run the bell system through it. So right now, Kila's bell system is on a old laptop that's really old, that you plug in something to, and it wirelessly connects, so it's very old over here. It's kind of a newer system, but you still have to plug into something in the office. So it will be something where we can wirelessly, wherever, if we need to change the bells, we can change the bells, we can turn it off on this end of the building and leave it on for the high school, and that way for testing. We can, Kendra will have a console on her desk, and Samantha would have a console on her desk to do all calls from. However, we can set up desktop stations, so Mr. Pro and Ms. Patterson, Mr. Schonbacher could have an extra microphone, log into it on the website of it and make announcements from their computers electronically, so you don't have to be actually at the little monitor that's, looks like a big phone that's...
What are you looking at, completed? Completion date?
I told them that if it was going to save us money, we could wait till May, because he originally quoted it with all overtime hours being done in the evenings. They would start at 3:00 PM or 4:00 PM and go till 7:00 AM. I said, I'm not big of prayer, I don't need to pay overnight overtime hours. So they took all it off. I said, we can wait till spring break, or we can wait till May to do it.
Yes, so it would really be for next August when we come back and...
Right, right, just to, I mean, they can go ahead and do it probably in March, but it's going to cost us more labor, and it's not something where...
I agree, yeah.
So a question about on, I guess, the United one? It says that there is no talkback from the field house or the underlying buildings, is that something?
That's something with Index, it's different. It'll be a...
They can.
They can. It'll be that pushback.
I would think that would be a little bit of a concern, like if something is happening at the field house, how, I mean, that's going to be easier to infiltrate than something like this.
Yeah, and there'll be a new horn speaker in the gym, there'll be a horn speaker in the elementary school gym, elementary playground, we did two horn speakers out there, by the way you can hear it, because right now there's only one speaker outside, so by the way, it'll give better coverage of the playground outside, so if Ms. Patterson makes an announcement, everybody out there can, should be able to hear it, we're screening children. And we can adjust the volume, want all of it to make it louder or quieter, but it would be, even in the wood shop, we added something in the wood shop, by the way, Mr. Pro is outside of the wood shop, you can still hear the announcement.
Bryce, that total amount's absorbed through that?
Yeah, so the security grant is repeating for three years through the state and legislation that was passed last year, so each school district gets $92,000 for three years. So, you know, this system, United Systems, all together would be 86,405. Index comes in at $90,100. So there's not a lot of difference there, but like Mrs. Tucker's talking about...
They don't know what the grant goes.
The index guy knows exactly what it's for.
Yeah, and we're also, we're still under that $2,000, so there's $2,000 there that we're actually going to put in another kiosk system, like in the front where the students can check in. We want to put one down on the east end at the gym. We want to put one down on the east end at the gym entrance because we have a lot of high school kids that come out for lunch. They need to come in. We can control that access there. As they come in, they can check in there. Kendra can see as they come in. And so, that'll be added in there also.
Is this your two out of the three? Or is this one?
Yeah, you know, and there's other schools, like, I mean, we have the key vault system already. You know, there's things like that. Of course, the security of schools, a resource officer is another part of that. We'll have two more years to look at some things. And we've talked about some other building needs, and we all kind of got together and just agreed that this will be something that district-wide we could take advantage of. Applications are already approved through the state for the crisis communication system. So, we just need to make sure that, you know, we discuss with this amount of money. It's a big, big topic for us to discuss here and decide with the board.
So, right now, I suppose you and Bryce have the same recommendation on which company to do it.
I would prefer Index.
Is that what you're recommending?
Yeah, I mean, just like, you know, what Heather pointed out. I mean, there's just some little things in there. The thing that, you know, I think sticks out quite a bit, too, is the customer service component that she talked about, especially with equipment like this. You know, if it's going to go down, it needs to come back online pretty quick. And the availability of, you know, getting to do that, I think, has been noticeably different than these two. So, I mean, my recommendation is going to be that we would go with the quote with this bid from Index, this communication system.
We've done business with them in the past, too, and their customer service is outstanding.
Any other questions or concerns on this topic? If not, I'll make a motion to approve, to accept the bid from Index. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Does it raise a second? Judy?
Littleville?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Takes us to number eight. Discussion of vote to approve or not to approve the surplus of a youth main tech refrigerator and youth main tech dishwasher from the Max classroom that have been recently replaced.
There's some pictures here that they provided.
Oh, wow.
Anybody want to split those? Just what it says, we want to be able to surplus those. Those have been replaced, those are their models. And they are no longer needed in there, so.
They'd be classes.
Yeah, and so, part of the thing here will be to surplus them. I'll either turn them online for bid or go through that process.
Questions on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the surplus.
Heather's made a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Does it raise a second? Judy?
Littleville?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Takes us to superintendent's report, number nine.
I only have just a whole lot to report. You know, as both principals mentioned, we've been pretty busy with basketball season getting started up. So, everybody's on the road, just want everybody to be careful and safe. As Mr. Pruitt mentioned, I just want to reiterate, you know, the Catherine Kids Heart program, I've heard a lot of good things about it. I've heard good things about it from the kids, from our staff as well. And what's really going to make it work even better is to get the feedback in those surveys. So, if you get those and get the link and can have a few minutes to fill those out, we would appreciate it. I know, I just, I filled two of them out. One is a staff member and one's a parent. And, you know, five minutes, five, six minutes, that's about all it takes to do that. And that information will be really helpful moving forward as we get into that. But I think that it's going very well. I think it's something we'll just kind of continue to build on. Like I said, other than that, Christmas break is coming up, and I know everybody's looking forward to that. So, I hope everybody has a great, has a great Christmas. We were able to give the staff the retention stipends before Thanksgiving. All very appreciative of that. Once again, I hope that we can find a way to continue that as well next year. But, I think it's pretty good.
Thanks, Bryce. Any new business?
There is no new business.
Number 11, make a motion to adjourn, do I have a second? Does it raise a second? Judy?
Littleville?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
6:35.